Executive Order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing GoToWebinar application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we'll be using the questions functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel. That is on the right side of your screen. The mobile devices, excuse me, on mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you are commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have rule call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Apparently here.
I was going to say councilwoman.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. If everyone can please stand for an invocation by Councilmember Shaw, followed by Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Espendola.
Right. Before we go to prayer tonight, just wanted to say a few words because coming up Monday is Memorial Day. And at this time of the year, it's very important that we take a few moments and remember those who gave the ultimate price in protecting our freedoms. So let's pause for a moment of silence before we go into prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, and we just thank you now for those that so lovingly and caringly sacrificed themselves for the greater good, for our freedoms of what we call America. Father, I just pray that you would just have your guiding and protecting hand upon our community, give us wisdom here at the council, and pour out your blessing upon our residents here. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, we have anything to report on closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken either on 518 or 519 closed session. All members were present. Mr. Cardoza did recuse himself on item B on today's closed session. Thank you.
You want to mention your recusal as well?
Through the mayor, I also recused myself on two items in closed session.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to modify the agenda for tonight? Saying none, we'll move on to item number two. Number one will be presented, the presentation about Yuba City COVID-19 Relief Task Force that's going to occur at another meeting. And number two, Ms. Langley, a discussion on action on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is just your biweekly update. So city operations, city hall, and animal control are now open. The hours are 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday. All other facilities continue to remain closed to the public, and the Department Operations Center has shifted to an as-needed basis. In terms of city hall, you can see that we've set up the entryway so that as customers come into city hall, they go through these barricades here to get to a greeter that we have that sits outside the doors of city hall from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The greeter then checks interior to city hall to see if there's anybody at that particular counter that they want to go to. And then if there is, then the customer waits outside until they get an opportunity to go inside. Once customers go inside, there's markings at the counters to provide that six-foot separation between the employee and the customer, and there's also germ guards that have been placed. Once they conduct their business, they're then exited out separate doors than the entryway to try to minimize contact as much as possible. The other thing that, as we've moved further into Phase Two or Stage Two in regard to restaurants, that now that dine-in eating is allowed, we have a restaurant outdoor dining policy where restaurants may utilize existing parking, whether it's on their property within the public right-of-way, to expand the seating options. The main thing to do is provide development services with a site plan. If they're proposing to convert parking spaces within the public right-of-way to dining, they would need to also get an encroachment permit. So far, two restaurants are taking advantage of this program, and that's Cool Hand Luke's and Happy Viking. Update on the county variants attestation. Here's a map that shows in yellow the counties that have moved further into Stage Two. The surrounding counties to Sutter and Yuba Counties, so to the west, north, and east, have transitioned further into Stage Two, and it's anticipated that the counties to the south, that would be Yolo and Sacramento Counties, will follow shortly due to California's second regional variance opportunity that was released on May 18th. And so what that does is it shifts away from looking at hospitalizations that have occurred within the last 14 days to look at other markers for allowing these counties to move further into Stage Two. So with this second regional variance opportunity, it's expected that many of the counties within California will be able to move further along. The other things we mentioned two weeks ago, we do get quite a bit of phone calls related to the public health order, and so questions from business owners can be directed to this website and this phone number, and then questions regarding compliance of a business can be directed to this website and phone number. And with that, we have the police chief and fire chief here, the development services director, and the finance director just over in his office and readily available if you have any questions related to those operations of the city.
Anything from you? All right. Hold on. It's not a question. All right. Well, thank you very much. I'd like to hear if the directors have any challenges that we might be able to help with or anything you would like us to be aware of to give you the opportunity to let us know. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Just real briefly, I just wanted to point out that the activity around Yuba City has picked up a little bit as people are out and about. Law enforcement's spending a lot of times addressing the same people that we've arrested once in the day that are let out, and then we already arrest them again because of the zero bail. So we are seeing a lot of activity. We are not having the time to devote to the business compliance stuff, but I don't think that was ever the intent. It's more of an education process, but we are out there and we're being busy right now.
Through the mayor. Chief, in regards to the zero bail, I know that there's been some discussion about trying to remove that and get back to what normal. Do you have any timeframe? Have you heard any scuttle on that at all?
No, I have not. We were kind of out of the loop on that. I think if we had an option or an opportunity to speak, this would have never happened.
I know it's got to prove a challenge to have somebody commit a crime, book them, and then see them back out on the street.
I think we had, if I'm not mistaken, we had one that had three different incidents in one day already.
Crazy. That's zero bail on misdemeanors only, right?
It's pretty much almost everything except for certain felonies.
Okay. Well, thank you and your folks for everything. I guarantee you, you're busy. Grace, did you, Eric, I'm like you have something to say. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chief. I actually wanted to ask our fire chief a question, so...
Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I think we missed... Nice. Hi, Chief Alexander. Can you give us some more updates about the fires that have occurred here in the last couple of weeks and the results of these fires and how our fire department has helped out?
Well, we've had several fires in the last couple of weeks. They're still under investigation at this time. There is some complexity to having fires on larger scale where we're starting to get numerous occupants that are displaced. So instead of setting up a normal shelter like we did on the McCray incident, we had to transition over to hotel rooms to try to mitigate that spread that could occur in a shelter. But at this time, things are still under investigation in regards to those fires, but it did add a little bit of complexity to it, more than usual.
Are you seeing an uptake on those issues, or is it, what kind of activity are you seeing within this COVID-19 time?
Well, we're very busy in regards to just our normal call volume, so we're still having our rescues, our structured fires, and now we're starting to transition into the vegetation fire season. However, we're not seeing a connection between the structured fires that we're seeing, their wide range of accidental, to just nothing that would link them together at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'd like to hear from Director Moody. Didn't want him to feel neglected over there.
I appreciate the support.
All the time. Just maybe an update on any development activity or your take on interests, et cetera. I know it was a topic that was discussed this morning at a Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. I know you had briefed us that you felt like you started to see some activity, but maybe just give us a little bit more information if you might.
Yeah, on the development side, we've been really plugging along. It's been pretty busy this first couple of weeks back, I think mainly with a delay in issuing some of the smaller permits like solar that's been really active, and then also some of those small rebottles and patios getting ready for the summertime. So there was a backlog in that, and then also the larger commercial projects, they're still pushing forward. So a lot of those plans that were in the works, I'm going to show you a list here with a later item, but we have commercial projects, the KFC, Circle K Coffee Shop, O'Reilly's Auto Parts, Holiday Inn, Dollar General, Fern Feathers, Ampli Health, the LDS Temple, and the Fabric Source. Some major commercial projects are still pushing forward with those plans being in, and we're working through the plan check process. So there has been a couple tentative projects, you know, with hotels that were kind of, you know, starting to do preliminary talks and scoping and zoning that have kind of fallen off. But right now, we have a few, a couple of small subdivision maps that just recently came in, and hopefully these commercial projects push forward. So that's kind of where it's at right now. So I don't have a real good feel. I think if we get this turned around and start to see it open up, that we'll keep going forward.
Thank you.
And where is Feather River Mills? How is that going along?
Feather River Mills, so tonight, the rezone, which is the final action of that land use change, is going to be on the agenda with item six, and that will complete basically the whole, the land use issues down there. And so that opens the door for the KFC to have the permit issued and for the hotel to have a permit issued, and the rest of the Feather River Mills site move forward with whatever developments they want in the near future. And so as far as the Feather River Mills site itself, and Diana could add into this, the Public Works staff, Diana particularly, has been in the weeds on this project for a long duration, but they started excavation here the last week and a half. They're two weeks ahead of schedule with, and looking like they're going to wrap up soon, maybe the next week, with the land deal transaction happening here in the next few days. So here in the next few days, we should have the title transfer into Mr. Neunt's property, and they're within a week or so of closing out, and it looks like the soil stuff is turning out good. And so with that, the hotel has submitted their building set recently in the last week, and so my understanding is they're going to turn around and do a quick sale to the hotel developer and then initiate the hotel project.
Grace, do you have something, sir?
Yep. I'm not sure if it's for Ms. Langley or you, but maybe a Fifth Street Bridge update?
Yeah, I'll defer to Public Works with their hat on.
So we're expecting the final paving to take place in late June, and so the bridge project would be completed late June, early July, is what we're expecting at this point.
Are we out of the river, Diana?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't know that. I believe that we are.
They got the piers out, because I know that was their...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
They got the pier, if we're out of the river yet, have those piers that are in the water, they have to take completely out. I was just wondering if that was done yet.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Mr. Moody's Department, also Chief Police Department. Last month or so, we've had quite a few panhandlers popping up, and then also people selling produce, flowers, balloons, you name it, throughout the entire community, and it's not fair to our businesses that pay the business licenses and PG&E and rent buildings. It's not fair to them, and I want to thank those two departments for stepping up. They got my favorite number, I think. I say, you got a panhandler here, you got a merchant selling produce there, and they've been taking care of the problem. And short-staffed, I just really want to thank them for taking care of all that, and thank you very much. It's getting ugly. The community's getting ugly. People are just coming everywhere, and there's a street corner, there they are. So I want to thank those departments for stepping up and helping the city look good.
All right. Very good.
Through the mayor, I just had one quick question. Mr. Moody, I'm not sure if it's for yourself or Chief Alexander, but as you mentioned, Chief, we're going into fire season, and I'm seeing a lot of our undeveloped lots that are getting quite large with overgrowth, and that should be a concern with the homeless population. They've set fires down in the river bottoms. All it would take is just anyone, not even them, just, you know, a spark that would set those off. Is that something that code enforcement does, or is that something that the fire department, is they're out, we notify the owners of the property that if they're not, you know, cut back within a certain period of time?
So, yes, all of the above. And so due to the COVID-19 response and just the coordination with the businesses, we're, code enforcement was about a month behind on getting the letters out, to be blunt, but we're proactively working with the Fire Marshal and Jesse's Department, and then also code enforcement a few weeks back sent letters out with a strict deadline to get those properties cleaned up. And so definitely let me know if there's any outstanding properties out there that staff might not know about, but we're pushing hard to get caught up on those.
All right. Thank you.
Good. All right. Moving on to item number three, public communication. Do we have any public communications so far?
None received so far.
I'm sorry. Okay. Now we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. And I'm assuming no comment on consent calendar items, nothing? Okay. So we have items four, five, six, and seven.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Move to approve consent calendar items four, five, six, and seven.
Second.
I think Manny was first there, so first and second to approve consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to number eight, city employees' policy in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. Tonight, I am bringing forth the employee policies that were expanded during the COVID-19 pandemic response to have city council retroactively approve them and provide any guidance for any future implementation. So the city continues to respond operationally, as you know, to the pandemic. During the initial days of the pandemic, once the stay-at-home order was issued by the state of California and the city moved to a state of emergency, we had to adjust policies, as you know, for employees sort of on an, in real time. And as a result of this, that's, there was three memos that was issued from Human Resources in the month of March. And so tonight, I'm just going to walk through those parts of those memos that were issued that were part of the staff report to just explain to city council and the public as to why this was done. So part of what the city did during these initial days was classify employees, particularly non-safety employees, into essential and nonessential. And so as we closed city buildings in response to the pandemic and the state of emergency and the state of home orders issued by the state, some nonessential workers that were scheduled to work did not have work available, but they were available to work. So we paid those employees for their regular scheduled hours. That has, and I have a slide towards the end here that explains that that has decreased as we've moved through the pandemic and we've sort of, the order has relaxed, but this is where we were initially. Employees who were 65 and older, who were not sick but chose to stay home, were temporarily authorized to utilize their sick leave, and that still remains in place. And also the vacation caps were temporarily suspended, and those, we are recommending to continue that because until the emergency, three months until the emergency is declared over. If employees using a sick leave to care for a family member during quarantine or for themselves due to COVID-19, we're recommending that if they run out of sick leave, that they're able to use a negative sick leave balance, or negative sick leave balance up to 80 hours. And there has been some changes in the law since this was originally proposed, but we do, are recommending to keep this in place, even that there are, and I'll get into it, H R 6201. So we also allow temporary employees that were nonessential to be paid for their scheduled work hours, and so it was about a week period there. We did do that. That's been done. My last slide says that we have already started to bring back some temporary employees back to assist with the front counter at city hall or projects, is building a business and, you know, building projects in Ben Shop has picked up that we need to bring some temporary employees back, but we are definitely not at the level that we were prior to the pandemic. H R 6201, this was the last memo that was issued in March 31st. This is a federal law. I'm sure many of us are familiar with this. This provided for emergency paid sick leave and also emergency expanded family medical leave to include emergency time for those employees who need to have childcare due to their school or childcare closure. So at this time, there is no mechanism for public agencies to be reimbursed for this time. However, there is, hopefully, that will change in the future for us. So I know Diana is providing status updates, but, and I did mention some of these along the way regarding how we are going into Phase One, and some of these, one thing is that departments are reemploying temporary employees, and also the incident standby time in terms of nonessential employees being paid standby time is decreasing as well as we continue to provide service to the public. We do have employees doing self-screenings every day. They do have to, here at city hall, they have to take their temperature, and they have to answer a couple of questions, and they are required to wear cloth facial coverings while working, unless there is a safety hazard as is notes. So at this time, I would take any questions that you have. I just did a brief overview, but it gives you an idea of, you know, how we, the city responded to the pandemic, how we adjusted the rules and the policies and procedures of the city to remain flexible, and how we're also starting to evolve from that as the restrictions begin to change again. Thank you.
I just want to commend you and, you know, everybody in city hall that have really adapted. I mean, you've said you're flexible, you're adjusting. That's definitely what you've done. And the routine has become kind of the new normal, if you will, the new temporary normal, and it's working. And so everyone, I come in, people are, you know, they're smiling and they're happy and they're working, but they've got their face covered, doing their thing. So kudos to that. That's good. Do we have any public comment on the item?
None so far.
Nothing? All right. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving employee policies which were expanded in response of the 19 pandemic.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. And number nine, memorandum of understanding establishing the By County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team, otherwise known as HART. Sergeant Slade.
Hey, honorable mayor and members of city council. So today I bring before you the memorandum or MOU to establish the By County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team, or HART for short. Basically, what this team is developed of is a multi-jurisdictional between all surrounding agencies, or at least one person from those agencies is comprised of one team to go out and contact homeless and provide them resources and to reduce the amount of homelessness within the counties, not only at Sutter but Yuba as well. Also with this is, it brings forward some information sharing that wasn't there before between Yuba and Sutter. Sutter would, has their own, Sutter and Yuba City have their own homeless liaison officer, as well as Yuba County and Marysville, but the communication between the two weren't there. So we're hoping with, we know with this HART team, MOU, it's going to bring communication between both counties together. So the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the honorable mayor to sign the memorandum between the cities and counties to establish the By County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team. There's not going to be any fiscal impact with the city of Yuba City, because as you guys know, you guys have approved for one of our full-time officers to be the homeless liaison officer, so those will be part of his duties, adds that officer, is to address, to give at least 10 hours a month is what they're asking for once COVID-19 is over with, dedicated to the HART team. So at this time, I'd open it up for questions for you guys. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm going to ask the question. I appreciate you, Sergeant, for being here tonight, and I already know the answer, but I just want to make sure that as we do this, that those 10 hours don't consume all the other hours that we hired our liaison officer to do, that it doesn't detract from that. And I'm sure you guys have taken that into consideration, because I know how bureaucracy can, oh, we're going to do 10 hours, and it turns into 15, then it turns into 20, and suddenly we have our liaison officer being more in the bureaucracy than doing what the intent was. And I just, it's more of a comment to be aware of, and I know you guys are on it, and I trust you guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant. Do we have any public comment?
None received yet.
Nothing received. All right.
So through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Sergeant Slade, I thank you for bringing forward the resolution. I really, I'm happy to see that there is something formalized together in, within the jurisdictions. This has been long and, long in the works.
Yes.
Right? I think these activities are already occurring. It's just formalizing that within the relationship of the resolution, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is. These have been going on without the MOU. It's been going on for six, seven, eight months. It's kind of, obviously, we all know that it's slowed down a little bit with the interaction between all the departments because of COVID, but I can guarantee you that our officer, Mr. Kosky, Officer Troy Kosky, has been doing his due diligence, not just battling the homeless encampments, but also finding resources. And he's, you know, he's, during this COVID time, he's placed several of the normal homeless people within the city into the Better Way Shelter. So, and he's also, you know, battled some of the homelessness on the levees with, you know, the new city ordinance that has been adopted along the waterways.
Right. So in this, the COVID-19, I understand that there's, from my information, that of the homeless population in Yuba City, the zero, zero have been identified with COVID-19. And I would attribute that effectiveness to a lot of the work through HART and the other efforts through collaboration with nonprofits.
Yes.
Really pretty much sheltering place the homeless community, either in unsheltered or sheltered community areas, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so he's been intricately involved in all of this process that is just going on, and I think that a lot of our community maybe misses that piece of the work that our PD is actively engaged in.
Yes, ma'am. Officer Kosky, since appointed as the homeless liaison officer, has really gotten a real close working relationship with Behavioral Health, Hands of Hope, and Sutter County themselves, so they can all work in collaboration with one another to reduce the impact of homelessness within the city and county.
This is really a team effort. This is like a team goes out, takes care of the situation, so it's almost like a strike team away, an example of a fire, but this is called the HART team?
Yes, ma'am. So the HART team is more for, not for... Sutter County themselves, so they can all work in collaboration with one another to reduce the impact of homelessness within the city and county.
This is really a team effort, this is like a team goes out, takes care of the situation, so it's almost like a strike team away, an example of a fire, but this is called the H.A.R.T. team?
Yes ma'am, so the H.A.R.T. team is more for, not for enforcement, it's more for information and resource. So, when Officer Kosky goes out there, he's not to enforce, if there's a violation, he enforces, but it's not so much of enforcing, it's more for the safety of behavioral health and all the non-sworn individuals that go out and try to contact these people to pass on information.
Right, and so it's been pretty successful, I've seen the numbers in Better Way, our capacity, there's been at least five in the last month, I believe, in permanent housing, so there, this approach is very effective.
Yes ma'am.
So, I am extremely proud of the work that our PD is engaged in this, and this resolution is just a formality, but we've been doing this for several months, so thank you so much.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you very much. What do you say, should I sign it?
Sign it.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Make the motion.
Through the pastor mayor?
Through the mayor.
Yes sir.
May I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the counties of Sutter, Yuba, the cities of Live Oak, Yuba City, Marysville, and Wheatland, establishing the By County Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team.
Second.
Three of us stand it up.
Geez.
Roachambo.
I think it's Dave's turn this time.
All right, let them.
All right. And all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? None, thank you very much. We'll be on to number 10. This is a contract amendment with Land Logistics for Planning Consulting Services. Welcome back Ben.
All right, good evening, good evening mayor, members of the City Council. So the item before you is in regards to considering to amend the contract with Land Logistics in the amount of $35,000 to continue to provide planning and development entitlement services. And so, the Development Services Department has four main branches, city planning, zoning, land entitlement, building permit coordination, code enforcement, and then housing. Through that planning, one of their major focuses is land entitlement with subdivision maps, used permits, development plans, and with that, we've been using Land Logistics since early last fiscal year, so the beginning of the summer, fiscal year 1920. And so, the Development Services Department has nine full-time equivalent employees, beginning summer, summer 2019, early fall, there was a substantial change for various reasons in, with the planning division, particularly with the planning division. And so with that, we contracted with, with Land Division, with Land Logistics, to provide development services oversight, with the principal, Brian Millard, acting as the interim Development Services Director, and then his support staff to provide planning services forward to continue the land development, planning, land entitlement, planning functions within the department. And so, originally, when it first started in the summer, we had a $75,000 contract, we upped it in November to $260,000 to get us through to early 2019, basically based on the recruitment of those three key, three key personnel. And so with that, we had the assistant planner position start mid-January, and we had the successful recruitment, I would like to say, for the Development Services Director that started in January, and then, but with the planning manager position, we've had a hard time with that position, it's a senior-level staff, this position's been recruited for multiple times, and with that recruitment, we had one qualified candidate that was strong, but it didn't, she declined the offer, and so with that, it left that senior member of the planning division vacant, and so, so with that, I've been working with Land Logistics to try to stay within that existing budget, to see if, you know, as we bring up the new assistant planner and myself, to kind of take on those roles and transition, and transition over with ultimate goal of no longer relying on contract staff. And so, so with that, that transition, I still have a need, and so, without having kind of that key planning manager, a full-time role, I still have some of these projects that we, that with the LDS Temple, the Harder Development, Sutter Foods, some of the subdivision maps that are coming through Perkins Ranch, Hooper Ranch, East Sanborn Estates that need processing, and the staff time to look at that environmental review, and have that expertise to be able to work through the initial study and some of these, these analysis on it. And so, so with that, here are some of the current commercial plans, the larger commercial plans that are in the works right now, that was discussed earlier. And so with that, I recommend modifying the contract to provide an additional $35,000 from the budget operational cost for the 1920, to provide that needed service as we continue to wean off the contract services. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment?
None received yet.
All right, we're open for a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to amend the existing professional services agreement between the city of Yuba City and Land Logistics of Davis, California, subject to approval to the legal form by the city attorney to increase the FY 1920 contact or contract? Contract, it's contact, but it's contract in the amount of $35,000 from $261,400 to $296,400 trillion, no, $400, there's an extra O there, and with the findings that of the best interest of the city.
Second.
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None, thank you very much Ben, appreciate it. We've already established there has been no public comment so far today, but do we have any input for future agenda items from the council?
Through the mayor.
Sir.
For council's consideration, I think it's appropriate for us to, to consider whether or not the city is going to participate in the By County Fireworks Show for the 4th of July, as well as the status of our children's parade on the 4th of July, we could bring that to a future agenda. I know our, our friends across the river in Marysville are taking that up tonight, and I assume that so will the other counties eventually.
All right, that's a good idea. Dan, if we could perhaps bring that up, along with some recommenders or possibility for funding purposes as well, sources, if any, at this point. All right, anything else? All right, we'll move on to reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
Okay, it was fairly quiet two weeks, for chamber events, I was, there was none. We had an ambassador's meeting, which I wasn't able to attend, due into a closed session meeting here at the city for meetings. I attended the Community Memorial Museum Association meeting, which I'm on the board, had a pretty great, good meeting, moving forward, going through all this. We're planning on getting the museum opened up as soon as we're allowed to, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, hope Dr. Lou will let us do that, and we are planning for the reopening of the museum and also events in the future. I was, I listened in on the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting, that was, so I was able to just be there, listen, what all the good things is going on with that, and I'll let my fellow councilmembers that were on that board speak about that. For community and city events, wanted to thank our Parks and Recreation Department, we did our last playful pickup at The Gap on May 8th, we passed out goodie bags for the kids to have things to do, being that there isn't much going on now, so that was a fun thing for the kids to do, we had quite a few folks show up, and we had to say sorry, but this was our last one, hopefully we can do that again in the future. I was asked and called, and I volunteered to help out at the Yuba Sutter Food Bank, I helped pack 500 food bags, or make up 500 food bags, to distribute it, hand it out to the community the next day, so that was, you know, meeting more folks at the food bank and getting things done, it's quite the experience, putting minimal things in a bag and making sure that they're passed out to the community. And then also, I got a couple of special thank yous, first, I'd like to thank the Bureau of Force Ninth Reconnaissance Wing for doing the flyover of our community, supporting our first responders and our healthcare workers to fight against the COVID-19, and also, I'd like to thank Councilmember Shaw, Yuba City Racket Club, and Chief Alexander and his wife, Bryn, for the mask giveaway Saturday, they also had a wonderful turnout, and donations went to the food bank, so it was a win-win for everything, and Councilmember Shaw passed out over 3,000 masks, so that was a great turnout there and a great fun time for our community to be. And then, my last announcement is, I'd like to let everybody know that tomorrow night at our Sutter County Museum, which is right across the street here, we are having our first certified farmer's market, it'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, directly behind, in the park, directly behind the museum, you could park in the parking lot at the museum, and also in the back, and that's going to be from every Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 through September, and other than that, that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, Councilman Cardoza, you were quite, that was a slow week for you, that was pretty, pretty long of a list of items, you covered a lot. I'll begin to thank you too, Councilman Shaw, for your generous idea of handing out masks, and our fire chief and his family, and the racket club, that's, you know, it's tough for everyone to wear a mask, I mean, let's be truthful, I, I'm not a big proponent of having to wear a mask, but I do it, as my friends behind me said, is not to protect myself only, but it's to protect you, and it's tough to wear these masks, but they are effective, and this was a nice little gift, and I've received several under, I think they're only a dollar, so it's not a big gift to, to report, but I've gotten a few of those, so thank you so much for sharing and the good health of that. There's a couple of meetings that I went to, and I, well, let me say, virtually participated or conference called in, and the first was, the mayor and I were, and I just learned that Councilman Cardoza was there too with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, lot of good information, lot of different activities completed, mainly it was budget development, so I don't know, mayor, if you're going to add something to that, so the next meeting's going to be June 10th, and we approved the budget to be, the proposed budget for review for June 10th. There, there is a little bit of challenges possibly financially there too, but we're still exploring that. The other was the Regional Water Authority, and I have not been to one of these meetings physically yet, I was online with our city man, interim city manager Diana, and Diana's well-known across the state for her work and how an expert she is in this area, I am a novice, I, I know where the water comes from generally, and how we work it here in the city through our water treatments, and, and just opening the faucet, you know, I prefer water right out of the faucet. But one of the things that they also reviewed was budgets, I guess it's just the time of the year, right? Here at the city, we're talking about budgets as well, they're talking about the Regional Water Authority budget, and so I learned that the city, us as a city are members of the Regional Water Authority, we pay membership, and that gives us a seat to be one of the board of directors, and I believe, Councilman Shaw, were you there last, last go around? Okay. And so, they were discussing to increase the, the, the membership dues, there was a greater amount, I guess, prior to COVID-19 was being considered, like 18% increase, and now with COVID-19, they're softening that amount to maybe about 5% increase, but I don't know if it's a final, final, anything to add? Diana, no? So, we're, we're still, that's in the process as well. Very interesting, the larger scope of how many participants and members, and so I look forward to reporting more on our activities, but as I am learning about this, it's clear that there's good purpose to being a member, we receive, as a city, we qualify for bulk purchasing of different other items that otherwise, for our treatments and all the other things would cost us a lot more if we were not part of that regional water authority, so. Any questions, gentlemen, or thoughts, or Councilman Shaw, that I should, you know, you were there before I was, anything I should be aware, or did I miss something?
You did great, because the first thing you said was, our interim city manager is very well-respected through the state, and she represents us very well, so it makes our job as electeds nice and easy, so you nailed it.
Exactly, thank you.
Sir.
Guess that would be me, sir.
You.
All right, thank you to both of my fellow councilmembers, you know, the last two weeks has been a lot of taking care of the community, not many things going on as far as meetings because of where we're all at, but first, Chief Alexander, you and your wife Bryn, thank you guys for stepping up. I want to speak more to the community tonight than anything, because, you know, the last couple of weeks have been very, very challenging, and so a lot of our time has been being there to support our businesses as they try to reopen, and support our residents as they try to figure out what reopening is going to look like, and that's where special people in community step up, and Chief, I'm just going to spotlight you and your family, because when we started that little project, kind of a harebrained idea, because people needed them, and I will never forget you walking in going, we want to be a part of this, and I know you don't go for the public accolades, but since it's been brought up, I just want to say thank you to you and your wife, and, because you've only been with us four months, and you care enough about this community to say, we want to be there and support it, so kudos to you guys, and thank you. On that, I would say thanks to my staff and the racket club that was there as well, it was a great day, but more focused on what's going on in the community. Just want to say thanks to our businesses, they have gone above and beyond in the last two weeks, if you go into any of the restaurants, go into any of the businesses, our local shops are really taking this mandate that was handed to them to meet the standards to an incredible level. You know, I heard one story that they went into one of the restaurants, and they were, I mean, they were down steam cleaning underneath the tables and such, going to that extra degree to make sure that we do this right, and so, to all of our business owners, I just simply want to say thank you, because you're doing your part, and to our residents, simply put, you know, we're not going to be, we're not going to do things and be scared into doing things, meaning we're scared of the pandemic or other things, we're doing this in a safe fashion, in an orderly fashion, and I just want to thank everybody that's been involved guiding that path, and thank you to the residents for doing the small things like these masks that we have, everybody's little part helps, and if you need to stay home, stay home, if you feel safe going out and working, and you're able to, go out and work, we all got to do this together, we will get through it together, and so tonight, my message is just simply two words, thank you.
And thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as far as council actions, fair amount of closed sessions, I think we meet more in closed session to discuss budget and COVID-19 than, than probably any other council that I can ever remember at least being involved with, so to, to the staff that guides us and provides us with information during those meetings, especially since many of them are pretty fresh on the scene, I extend my, my thanks, also to each one of you that sit up here, it's, it's the kind of work that we volunteered for, and I don't think any of us thought COVID-19 would come up on the horizon, but here we are, and I think we're dealing with it very, very strategically and very methodically. The budget itself is a big looming issue, it's, it's a, it's going to be a challenge, but I feel comfortable that with staff and with this group of council folks that I work with, we'll plow through it, and we'll continue to provide the services to the citizens of Yuba City to the best of our ability. My, my meetings as representing the council, LAFCO, was last week, a couple of things that involve the city is, that are coming up on LAFCO's agenda are expansion of the sphere of influence, and that's going to be taken up in July, that's a, that's a big deal for the city, it paves the way for potential for some future growth. In conjunction with that, we still continue to work with the county on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, there was some headway made over the last few weeks, I think as, as we inch more towards normal activity, things like the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, Development Impact Fee Committees, and things- and things that we've been involved with will again rise up towards the top of the stack to get done. At the chamber this morning, they had a Government Affairs Committee meeting. It was encouraging to hear again a lot of the work that the chambers doing on behalf of our businesses with different workshops on how to deal with Paycheck Protection Program and some of the things that our small businesses are going to need to navigate through some pretty challenging times ahead in regards to not only dealing with the grants or the loans that they've got, but just continuing with their business. Two weeks ago, we left this meeting with a little bit of a spring in our step because our county, Bye County Public Health Doctor, Dr. Lou, the previous Friday, had released an order that granted our small businesses and local businesses the opportunity to open up their business, which was important to them not only financially, but psychologically. As we left the meeting, it became clear that the state was not pleased with that and had begun various enforcement efforts specifically targeted at those businesses that hold state licenses. Over the next two weeks, a lot of effort, a lot of effort behind the scenes from Assemblyman Gallagher, Senator Nielsen, both county boards, Robert Bendorf County Administrator, Steve Smith County Administrator. And I know Diana had, our city manager was also involved in that. The result was for the restaurants, the ability to open up. And as Councilman Shaw just mentioned, you know, making all kinds of efforts to maintain sanitation and protect their customers. We're still struggling a bit with the barbers and the salons, et cetera. But hopefully there's some light at the end of that tunnel. At least it sounds like there is. But I just want to extend my thanks not only to the staff, as everyone else has, but specifically to those folks that really carried the load. Not that any of us didn't, but these folks, Robert Bendorf, Steve Smith, and Dr. Lou were on the forefront, pulling levers, making contacts, and doing things to get this city at least on the march back towards opening up. And a special thanks, and I know he's getting it from other jurisdictions as well, is for Assemblyman Gallagher, because he personally took some efforts on behalf of businesses that are located within our city with some of the enforcement efforts. And that's not the kind of attention sometimes you get from an assemblyman. Very impressed. With that, that'll conclude my comments, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just kind of pick up where you left off, and while we're on that topic. It's, again, yes, Robert Bendorf, Dr. Lou, Steve Smith have really stepped up and a lot of after-hours phone calls, same thing with our city manager, Diana Langley, doing the same thing, working. This crisis doesn't know weekends or after 5:00 p.m. or anything. And I look out here, these faces, everyone has done a significant effort, and this is all new to all of us. But we're adapting, we're moving forward, and we have the right attitude. And I think that is huge, is to have the right attitude and do the right thing for the right reasons as we get through this. But yes, and Assemblyman Gallagher, not only he specifically went to bat for local businesses here, but he took some risk in doing so, and we appreciate that. And that comes with leadership, is taking a stand and doing the right thing, no matter what may come of it later, as long as you stand by your principles. And he's definitely demonstrated that. And Chief, while you're here, thank you for participating, some of those phone calls with ABC as well. I'm sure the businesses really appreciated it. On the note of thank you, I also, it'd be, it's an honor to thank Councilmember Shaw and Chief Alexander for the efforts for the masks for the community, purely just out of the goodness of your hearts and those who helped you to provide for the safety and the well-being of our community, and I thank you for that. So thank you. Much appreciated. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention peace officers the moral week that we weren't able to participate in this year because of COVID-19. That's very sad. However, efforts were made appropriate and with the right adaptations due to COVID-19 to recognize those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the name of the safety of our community in our state, not only this last year, but in perpetuity backwards. And one more name is too many, but, you know, it's a big, big deal to go to work and not know if you're going to come back. And so to recognize those folks is important, so I would like to do so by mentioning that in their memory. As Vice Mayor mentioned, basically daily budget planning, even if not a meeting, but mentally preparing. We don't know exactly what's coming down the pipe at us. However, we know it's going to be challenging. We will work through that, but it's definitely taken up a lot of our time around the clock, discussions and planning and what-if-ing a lot of scenarios. As time goes on, we are, we're getting a little sneak preview of how things might be looking. We're running certain numbers and certain scenarios and trying to come up with a plan to do that. And we are having a, my phone is dead, but we have a budget session coming up soon. We'll be able to bring that out to the public.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Thank you. Looking forward to that. As far as my meetings go, like everybody else, seems to have been kind of all surrounding COVID-19 and have been virtual. SECOG down there in Sacramento, very important that we are a part of that. And thank you for the summary that we put together. I really appreciate that, Diana. I'm on the Transportation Subcommittee as well. The big topic now, and we have another meeting on Thursday, is the funding rounds and the formula and how they determine Yuba City's piece of a multi, multi, multi-million dollar pie. And not necessarily Yuba City, but all cities, part of the jurisdictions. And there's different schools of thought, and we're going to be voting and deciding upon that, whether we do it population-based or project-based. It's interesting, and hopefully we'll get to chat more about that before I vote on Thursday. But that's the biggest thing there is a lot of research doing, which way is the right way to go. I can understand both sides. For example, if you do population-based, you get a certain, SECOG, say, gets $250 million. And you get your slice of that for project based on your population. So withstand the reason, the more population you have, the more money you're going to get, which would be a bummer for things like Fifth Street Bridges, because it's going to take a long time to get that kind of money that we got from SECOG for something like that. However, on the other side, you have the ability to count on the money you're going to get, and so you can plan your projects accordingly. And also, when you put your package together to apply for the money, you can go with the projects that you prioritize versus the project that might be, look a little more attractive in writing to the judges down south. So again, both sides, more discussion needs to occur to see where we're going to go, but that's been a big thing on the forefront lately in my SECOG world. Let's see here. Councilwoman Espendola had an idea for a video regarding COVID-19 and our emergence from it and things, and kind of a unity message for our city. And so I've been, had my opportunity to film a few short scenes with George Barlow. He's doing a really good job, or at least appears so. I can't wait to see the final product. I didn't realize he had a drone and the whole bit, so he's a pretty squared-away and equipped guy. So we're all participating in something like that. And then other than that, I've just been being a homeschool to a 10-year-old, and that's a thrill a minute. So once again, a lot of appreciation for the single parents out there and our teachers. So other than that, I think we have a new record, 58 minutes. I thank you all very much. I thank all those who have joined us in virtual land and TV for participating. Maybe kind of wish you would have said something, but I understand that's okay, and we'll catch up with you. Other than that, everybody, please stay safe and have a great evening. I'm going to stand recessed.